Good evening. I call this November 19th, 2020 meeting of the Morrisville Town Council to order. Thank you to those watching via livestream and those who are watching the recording of this meeting. On November 23rd, a video of this meeting will be uploaded to www.townofmorrisville.org/government/live-video. Please visit www.townofmorrisville.org for updates regarding future town council meetings, or feel free to email townclerk@townofmorrisville.org with any questions. At this time, I'm going to take a moment to acknowledge that because of the COVID-19 pandemic, this year has been particularly difficult for all of us, and we all want it to end so we can get back to some semblance of normalcy. All around the country, including here in Wake County, the virus continues to spread. We can take control and improve our situation for ourselves, our loved ones, and our town. Have a mask with you at all times. Whenever you are inside anywhere other than your own home, wear a mask, even when visiting a close friend who has also been careful. As it becomes cold and we are no longer able to be outside as much, we still feel the pull of the need for in-person social connection. It is what makes this bearable. The fact is, no one wants to get or pass along this virus, but only through our dedicated, persistent, consistent actions can we do all within our power to avoid being a victim or a spreader ourselves. So please, get behind your mask even when it is not legally required. Whenever you have to be outside your home, wear your mask and have our gratitude. Always wait six feet apart and wash your hands often, and download the Slow COVID NC app to your phone and enable your Bluetooth so it can function anonymously for your protection. If we each do our part to support and protect each other, the governor may be able to avoid the tightening of restrictions to save the lives of North Carolinians. Thank you very much. At this time, I'll ask Eric Smith, our town clerk, to conduct a roll call of council members. Mr. Smith?
Mayor Colley?
Present.
Mayor Protem Johnson?
Present.
Councilmember Fender?
Present.
Councilmember Garamella?
Present.
Councilmember Rao?
Present.
Councilmember Robati?
Present.
Councilmember Scroggins-Johnson?
Present.
All councilors present.
Thank you, sir. Before proceeding further, I'll ask if there's a motion and a second to invoke Rule 19.
So moved.
I'd like to recognize Councilmember Johnson, I mean Councilmember Rao.
I move to invoke Rule 19.
I recognize Mayor Protem Johnson.
I will second.
Okay. Town Clerk Smith, if you could please do a roll call vote on that motion.
Aye.
Councilmember Fender? Councilmember Garamella?
Aye.
Councilmember Rao?
Aye.
Councilmember Robati?
Aye.
Mayor Protem Johnson?
Aye.
Mayor Colley?
Aye.
The motion to invoke Rule 19 passes unanimously.
Thank you, sir. We are now at item four, discussion items. There are two discussion items on tonight's agenda: a town-owned properties and land acquisition guidelines discussion, and a Morrisville Dog Park options and green printing update. Brandon Sudima, our assistant town manager, will facilitate our first discussion. Mr. Sudima?
Good evening, mayor, members of council. Thank you for your time tonight. I'm going to request control here. All right, Jeannie, can you move the slides then?
Yes, thanks, Dan. It's actually not even allowing you to dig into control. Be glad enough.
Okay. So again, mayor, members of council, this evening, we've had quite a bit of conversation around land acquisition and around property and other things. So this evening, we want to take some time to walk you through first, what we already own, and make sure that we're all sort of have the same starting point as far as the property and the pieces of land that we owned around the town. So we're going to talk through that, show you some examples on the map. Want to put a little bit of emphasis on our parkland inventory. That would include both parks and open spaces with some reference to the master plan. Also want to emphasize a little bit the town center core and those properties. Spend a little bit of time discussing land acquisition policy and what we're going to be doing in terms of implementing your land acquisition policy once you adopt that potentially at our next meeting on the 24th. Jeannie, next slide. So currently, the town owns a total of 82 parcels, and as you can see, those are broken out there into the different sort of categories. Those are just categories that I've used that make some sense to me, and I hope will make some sense to you as I walk you through them tonight. And then I'm also going to make quick reference to some non-town-owned parcels. We do have seven locations that we use and that are often thought of as town's property, but we don't actually own them, and I'll give you a quick overview of what those are. Jeannie, next. You have in your packet this town-owned properties map. I understand that's a pretty small parcels there on a bigger map, but largely just for reference to show you that we really have pieces of property all across the town. Anything that you see there in purple is one of our town-owned properties, and again, you can certainly dive down into that a bit when you have it. Jeannie, next. So the first category that's on your list are the town facilities, and these are, I think, pretty self-explanatory. These are largely the office buildings, fire stations, places like the historic Christian Church, public works facility, the things that we use most every day to get our work done, and then you'll notice that the Wake County Library is listed on there. We own the property, not the building, but we do own the property that that building is on. Jeannie, next. So in terms of parkland inventory, wanted to do this so that it essentially lines up with the 2018 master plan that you are familiar with. So as a reminder, that master plan identified a total of 127 acres of parkland. Important to point out that we own 84 out of the 127. This is where several of those sites come in that we don't own but make use of, and that, of course, includes the community center, Cedar Fork District Park, a portion of Shiloh Field and Luther Green Building, the Ruritane Park, and then the Sarah Woody Jenkins Park, which is a small piece of property that's actually owned by the railroad. Jeannie? And then, again, in addition to park space, there's also open space that we own, and that includes some space that is planned for future expansion potentially. Of course, the Crabtree Creek Nature Park expansion is on there, Indian Creek Greenway, which is now being completed, Morrisville Square open space, the former TTA property, and then some Waterford open space. Since 2018, we have added 3.4 acres, which is the Carrington property, which is the assemblage of properties just on the south end of Church Street Park. So we now currently own a total of 210.24 acres of parkland, and it's proposed in the master plan that there would be an additional 125 acres, and you have seen some emails back and forth today with some additional explanation around where that recommendation came from. Jeannie? Thank you. Just for reference, for the ones that you might not be as familiar with, the Addison Place open space, the arch that you see sort of at the bottom of the screen on the left is Morrisville Carpenter Road, so then up off of Lee Croft Way is where those two properties are that are part of the Addison Place open space, and then the Waterford open space is over off of Church Street near Park Place Avenue, two connected pieces of property there. And then also just for reference, and of course, this is all coming from that larger map that you have with the numbers on it that all relates to the spreadsheet. So you have number 41, which is the open space, and then 74 is the TTA property, and then on the other side, you see number 18 there, of course, is Church Street Park. So 19, 20, 21, and 22 are four of the five pieces that would ultimately make up the assemblage there. That piece in green is the Mitchell property that is still privately owned. This next is just a list of the different properties that we have parks or Greenway on. Again, it's all the places that you generally know about, including those open spaces that we mentioned, not going to read that list to you. And then the next page, and I guess the note there at the bottom is worth mentioning, there are certainly other portions of Greenway in town. They're not listed here because they're already included in an existing park space, or we may have secured them through an easement or some other type of agreement where we don't actually own the property. We're all familiar, of course, with town center. So we own 20 lots that are considered a part of the town center, and then there are one or two pieces sort of on the periphery of that. This next map shows those 20 properties by those numbers on the spreadsheet there as to give you an idea of what we own versus what is still privately owned in the area of town center. And then, Jeannie, if you'll go one more. This is a different look at the same area. So this shows you that anything, again, that is in yellow is what we own. This shows you the actual physical address of the property, and if it is blue, it indicates that there is a residence of some sort, something residential on the property, and if it is a black, it means that it is something else, and that would include something like the Google Hut, which is over on Foxglove or other things, and then anything in red is a vacant lot. So that's sort of the compilation of the town center properties that we currently have and could potentially be interested in. Next, we've got just some other properties. I'll just run through those very quickly. One is over at Green and Clements, and that is a potential for some connectivity there. We have property on the corner of Kit Creek and Lewis Stevens. However, that is designated to have to be a fire station property. If we do not use it as a fire station, it would revert to Cisco. So at some point in the future, we anticipate that's what will happen. It does not meet our fire station model. Then we have 219 Church Street, which has a rental property and the community garden, and also the former Upchurch Home on it. That's right there, one of those sort of on-the-edge-of-town-center properties. And then, again, we have the Google Hut, which is at 1001 Foxglove. The other properties on this screen are for future roadway expansion. We have a lot on Chapel Hill Road that will be part of the McCrimmon Flyover. We also have the lot over on Franklin Upchurch that will be part of the Morrisville Carpenter upgrade with the restructuring of Franklin Upchurch Senior Street. And then, again, another piece on Page Street there that'll be partially impacted by the MCR widening, and then we own a piece of property over on Trolley Car Way or near Trolley Car Way on Traybrook that'll be part of Airport Boulevard when that's ultimately expanded. Lastly, in terms of the town properties, are vacant lots. The majority of these are still in sort of the town hall area, if you will. We own a number of properties down in that area, and then we also own a couple of properties. We own the property adjacent to Fire Station 2 at McCrimmon and Church, and then it's hard to tell on this screen, but at, excuse me, that's McCrimmon and Chapel Hill. At McCrimmon and Church, we own a very small lot, and I would say the southeast corner there that is less than an acre. So we have that, and then we also have one property out on Watkins Road that was purchased a number of years ago, and in all candor, I'm still figuring out why we made that purchase, but we own a piece of property out there as well. So the other thing I'll reference is those non-town-owned properties. Spoke about a couple of those with parks. Again, these are properties that we use on a regular basis but don't technically own, and of course, that's the community center, Cedar Fork District Park. We lease space for the Parks and Rec Admin Office, and then you have Ruritane Park, Sarah Woody Jenkins Park, our new senior center over on David's Drive, which is leased space, and then that front portion of Shiloh Park that belongs to Shiloh Baptist Church, and we leased that from them. So that was sort of quick and down and dirty, but you've had this information and you have that map, so I just wanted to sort of provide an overview of what we have as far as the property that we own. Important to appreciate that, I think, before we start talking about other properties we might try to acquire. So the second portion of the presentation that I've got then is to talk to you about as we look not only at the pieces of property that we currently own, but more importantly, at potentially acquiring additional property, how are we going to evaluate that property? And so I've been having conversations with some of my peers across the county and others involved, and so what we are going to be doing is to considering a variety of factors, and it really will be on a case-by-case basis because there are so many different factors that could influence property. Again, I'm not going to read all of these bullets to you, but generally speaking, the categories, we're going to be looking at our location, and particularly how that's tied to issues for transportation and current uses. Again, also, what is a known or potential use for the property? The fact that a property becomes available is great, but we want to make sure that we're spending dollars wisely when we make those decisions, and so we know what we can do with the land we might purchase, what are the restrictions that are involved with it. Jeannie, next screen. Of course, cost is going to be an issue. We're going to be having more conversations this fall about potential funding sources. Also, if we purchase it, what are we going to do with it, and what does the ongoing maintenance look like for whatever that use is? We also want to make sure that we're being cognizant of our different strategic plans that are in place across the town. Also don't want to overlook the simple things like, are there utilities? Is there infrastructure to service the property, or is that what we'd have to work on? What restrictions might there be? And then what the site constraints might be in terms of environmental things like geotech, impervious surface? Again, really depending on what the intended use might be, how any of those factors would influence what we're trying to accomplish. Jeannie? And then, of course, other considerations beyond the criteria for the property itself. First and foremost is your CIP prioritization. What are you ranking as our first priorities to pursue? Again, you are about to ideally adopt a land acquisition policy next Tuesday, assuming that that goes through. That will provide guidance for us. The town center policy that you're also considering provides guidance to us, and then you have any number of other CIP policies that will influence how we pursue property and land acquisition. We will be working on broker engagement. That'll be done on a case-by-case basis to make sure that we are not missing anything as we get more involved in property acquisition, and then a use of a variety of realty services, many of which are online and used by others that work inland acquisition. So our next steps, again, not asking you for any decisions tonight, really, tonight is informational to make sure that we all sort of start out on the same page. Our first step is to, now that we have a good working list of what we own, is to evaluate that property and determine what it is that we're going to do with it if we're not already using it, and/or could it potentially be surplused. We need to establish land acquisition priorities. We'll do that with your guidance. Obviously, that will be the driving force involving financial decisions and the workload that's involved in accomplishing this process. Where that funding will come from is, I think goes without saying, a critical component of what we will do. And then, once we get to the point of understanding those first three bullets, we'll be more proactively engaging in efforts to implement your land acquisition policy and to begin to make additional purchases to pursue those goals. And then lastly, before questions, just do want to offer you that reminder that we're talking generally about properties in town, but trying to avoid any particular discussion about properties that we may not own in an open session. So with that, I would be happy to take any questions you may have regarding this information.
Recognize Councilmember Rao with his hand up.
Just a comment, not really, well, I guess it's a question. In terms of this meeting and the guidance that you need, is it to hear from the other council members on where the priorities are for our land acquisition plan? Because I know we've talked a lot about land acquisition policy, but what I would like to see us long-term is develop sort of a land acquisition or land banking kind of initiative where, at a real high level, we look at the areas of the town where some of them have already been mentioned. Obviously, Park Speedway is an open space. I know Mayor Colley brought this up at last year's retreat. I think that's a great initiative, and I see a lot of talk about that. We're talking about, you know, more fields for certain amenities, you know, dog parks, cricket, because we hear there's a shortage of cricket fields. So that would be one area. Then you've got town center, and then obviously, you know, transportation, but schools. So we've talked a lot about schools, and you're looking at where there's available land, where the county is considering a school, that we could actually, you know, have an initiative, but all of that costs money. And I don't know whether the guidance to the council would be, you know, would we want to take a look at that and then say, okay, these are our main areas we're going to focus on, and that we would have to allocate a certain number of dollars to say, okay, this is our land banking, or this is our land acquisition initiative? And, you know, based on that, we're going to say, this is how much money, and maybe it's a bond, maybe it's through the budget, because that, to me, seems like it would be more of a holistic approach than like a meeting like tonight where I don't know what it is. I'm seeing all these land and all these properties, and I just don't know in a few hours, we're going to be able to, you know, say, okay, well, I don't think that you want us to do that, but that's just my only question and observation as we set the...
I think that's a good question slash observation, and you're very on point. There are definitely two components to this, one of which is, you know, what are you going to prioritize in terms of the land acquisition that we pursue? And then, secondly, how are you going to pay for it, and how are you going to leverage those dollars versus the dollars for other projects that you're interested in? So I think that will continue to come together. We're moving towards that this fall as you have discussions about potentially a future bond referendum, as you're going to hear project updates coming up in the next couple of weeks, where you will be able to see sort of all of these bigger picture items together to then help us understand what your priorities are and where the financing will come from to do those different projects, and land acquisition being one of several that have been identified as potential priorities.
Councilmember Fender, please.
Yeah, thank you, Brandon, for putting this information together. It's very helpful to see it all in one place, and I'm kind of adding on to what Councilmember Rao is talking about, that, you know, I'm thinking you're already along this path, but I would see a next step as being, I, developing a list and a map of all of the undeveloped property within the town of Morrisville that we do not currently own, and then us starting to look at that list and putting priorities on that property, on various properties, as to which ones we think are critical for parkland and greenways, or which ones are critical for, well, for the town center. I mean, is that where you're headed with this initiative?
Yes, ma'am. I think that's a fair assessment. So you will actually hear tonight from Jerry Allen with Parks and Rec about a green printing report process that is underway, that does a lot of what I think you and Councilmember Rao are referring to, which is beginning to look at what is available or could potentially be available in the community. And so, yes, as we then get guidance from you, we're already working to develop sort of a list, and that comes from several places. I mean, people that potentially approach us, or places that we already know are potentially of interest, i.e. the town center, and then there's sort of the bigger picture of just what's out there that might be available to consider towards parkland, whether that's green space, open space, a park, whatever it might be. So, yes, I think that's a fair assessment, and that is what's going on.
Good. I'm pretty anxious to start that process because we're competing out there with developers.
I would echo that. There needs to be somewhat of a sense of urgency. Brandon and staff, thank you very much for doing this foundational work. Gathering all this information is so important, and I think in parallel to what Councilmember Fender was talking about, if we could also ask staff to identify which of our current owned land could be used to meet the needs that we've identified in our strategic plan and our transportation plan and our Parks and Rec master plan, and bring those recommendations back to us, and also do the same thing with the green printing, so it's not like throwing everything up against the wall and asking council what we think. If you guys could do the foundational work and make suggestions that we could react to, I think that could move everything along more quickly for us as a group. And so we all realize that we're playing a little bit of catch-up. The best time to make these purchases and decisions was 10 years ago. The second best time was last year, and now we can lead with urgency. So I think it's important that we really start to get some site control so that we can realize the vision and recommendations of our resident and businesses' supported adopted strategic transportation and Parks and Rec plans. So it sounds like you're not looking for decisions from us tonight, but I would echo Councilmember Fender's idea of moving forward with getting a list that, and match the list now that we have it, with uses so that we can move along and try to do some execution. And I'm a little less concerned about the funding. We talk about a bond, but that's difficult to be timely and flexible and agile with a bond. I think that we need to, in the meantime, use fund balance and be willing to take advantage of opportunities when they arise. So financing is important, but I don't think we can wait another two years to have bond funding available. So I'm getting a little bit down the rat hole there, but I just want to share that thought. So we have three more people who want to make comments. I'll first recognize Mayor Protem Johnson, followed by Councilmember Robati, and then Councilmember Garamella. Mayor Protem?
So, thank you. I'll try not to repeat what's already been said because some good points have already been made, but Brandon, I want to talk and focus a little bit more on the first bullet about evaluating the property that the town owns. When, do you have a timeframe you can talk about for doing that? And then, what exactly are you going to do when you evaluate the properties? Are you look, so for an idea, kind of what I'm thinking, are you evaluating the properties for our own internal use? Are you looking for, you know, to add to the parkland initiatives that we have, or a combination?
I think a combination is fair, so, you know, we want to make sure, now that we have this list, that we understand, you know, if it was purchased with a purpose, what was that purpose? Does it still make sense? If there's not an obvious purpose, does it still make sense because it's close to or linked to property? Is it something where there's a missing piece between that we can pursue? Or do we just have some pieces of property that perhaps it's not realistic to try to develop, and we could potentially put those onto the market while pursuing other pieces that might have more value to us? So we are already starting that process. It will take a little bit of time to work through what we have and what the use of it is. And again, some of that, you'll hear a little bit tonight about some different options when you talk to Jerry, and then we can come back to you with, starting with some higher level, here's what could happen with this, does this match what you have a vision for? And again, there is a little bit of prioritization among those different aspects of the property, but yes, working already now to get through this list, because some of it's just, you know, a no-brainer. We're using it, that's what it is, we don't have to worry about it, or we already have a plan for it, but there is a few pieces of property that we need to determine what we're ultimately going to do with it.
Okay, and so I hear you that it's going to take a little bit of time. What do you, what timeframe are we talking about here? Because I'd like to know if the properties we already own are going to be valuable pieces of property to help solve some of our initiatives or help advance some of our initiatives, because hopefully that will be the quickest way to do it, maybe.
Yeah, I see in the next, in the next few weeks, if we have parcels that we think have some value that we don't have an immediate use... have some value that we don't have an immediate use for, um, that would be engaging with a broker to work with us to determine what that value might look like to be able to share that with you.
Okay. All right. And I, um, the only other comment I make is about the funding. I think there's, um, you know, we have lots of options, um, about how we can advance the purchase of land. Um, but if we're really serious about purchasing, um, you know, well over a hundred acres of land, I think a bond is going to be incredibly important. And, um, I think in the past, we have not had bonds to purchase land. And, um, I think, I think that's necessary. I think it's very important.
Yes, thank you.
Councilmember Rabadi, followed by councilmember Garamella, please.
Uh, thank you, mayor. I certainly don't want to go down a funding rat hole either, but I do want to, um, I do want to add my voice to TJ's point about, uh, to Mayor Colley's point about being open to, to ways that we can be agile and purchase property that we've identified as valuable and central to our long range plans in a timely manner. I think that, that that's very important. Um, another question that I have is that if we, if we were to sell property that we determine is not, you know, doesn't meet our needs anymore, um, do we have the ability to earmark that toward purchases of future land that would meet our needs? Like can we, could we start like a, a land bank sort of fund like we have, like we have a fund for capital improvements? Can we, could we start a land acquisition bank where we put, where we channel that money and earmark it specifically for land? Or is that something that where we just put it in the general fund and then buy other land out of the general fund?
I, I think you could potentially do that. Um, you know, we may have to consider how it was purchased in the first place and what funds may have been used. Um, so we might have to rely on Frank a little bit on that. And then I'm sure Jeannie would have a, a much more detailed and better answer for you on that as well.
Okay. I don't, just to be clear, I don't need that answer tonight. I, I'm just, you know, that's something I would like to know if that could be covered at a future presentation. That would be helpful to me. Thank you.
Thank you.
Councilmember Garamella, please. And if there's any other councilmembers who wish to comment, please put that in chat. Councilmember Garamella.
Hey, Brandon. Thanks for replying my emails and giving more insight. My question remains, I went to the land use plan and it says that we have 870 acres of undeveloped land according to that. And, um, more than 50% of the land is in the, uh, airport overlay AO, I think, or, you know, the first one where you can't put any residential, which primarily comes to 435 acres of land where residential can be going in. And then if you save 127 acres, that's 25% of that land, um, we are going towards parks. So, so, um, my thing is at some point we need to have, um, a good discussion to see what the expectations are because, and set the real expectation, because, um, it's practically, I would say, impossible to, you know, a land bank, 127 acres, that's 25% of the acreage right now with the, um, it's possible, everything, but, you know, we know our constraints, we know where we are. So, um, that, um, because I don't want the, uh, parkland, they did their numbers, but for us and with the land which is available, we want to have a very clear expectation, uh, with, uh, within our council and the residents.
Yes, sir.
That's about it for me.
Uh, this TJ again, I just want to, um, ask a quick question follow up, I guess, to councilmember Garamella. Of the 807 total, you said half of that's in the airport overlay. Does that prohibit us from using it for parks or some of our other uses in your opinion? The airport overlay land?
It, I, I, I'll let Brandon answer, but TJ, from what I saw, it's like you want always a park which is close to your residence. Uh, so that's one of the reasons that I, you know, when it is not close to the resident, then there is no, you know, big buck for the usage of it. And, uh, when we don't have residents around the airport where there's no residential component, then having a park sometimes doesn't solve the purpose of walkability and mobility closer to the residential.
Okay. Makes sense. Thanks. Thanks for clarifying. I think I understand a little bit, a little bit better. I had, um, another thought that was sparked by what Mayor Potem was talking about, um, about surplus property. Um, I would like us to consider instead of surplusing and selling property, uh, seeing if there's any affordable housing partnerships that might be possible to use with that land. I know that we have a few habitat homes in an area of town. Um, I'd like to think that there might be interest in creating more partnership opportunities for using the land rather than selling it for cash, but for promoting our, um, affordable housing efforts. So that's just an option that, when that comes before us, um, as long as that can be considered, I'd really appreciate that.
Got it. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Uh, looking for other comments in chat? Do you feel, uh, Assistant Manager Zuduma, that you have what you need from us? Or do you have any other probing questions you'd like us to respond to?
No, sir, not for tonight. Tonight was really to, to share information with you and to just put us all on the same playing field as far as here's what we have and here's the direction we're headed in. So what I've heard from you confirms what our plans and intentions are. Um, so we'll keep working.
Okay. Um, and if at some point, maybe in rolling calendar or news and notes, if you can let us know, um, keep us updated on how it's coming along, when our next report on this will be. Uh, once again, we all really appreciate the foundational work that went into this. Uh, it gives us a good baseline to understand where we are as a town and where we're going and moving forward. So thank you to you and your team for that.
Yes, sir. Thank you.
Okay. Uh, Jerry Allen, Parks, Recreation and Cultural Resources Director, will facilitate our next work session. Mr. Allen.
Good evening, everyone. Uh, it's great to see and hear you all again. And, and thank you for this opportunity to talk with you tonight, um, about the, uh, town of Marsville Dog Park options and as Brandon alluded to, the green printing report that we've been working on. Um, I'd like to start off a little bit by, you know, uh, Jeannie, can we move down? Thank you. Like to start off a little bit talking about what the user base might be for a dog park. Um, based on the statistics we were able to find from several different studies, the, uh, and the number of occupied housing units that we have here in town, we feel like there's a, a household number of about 4,200 households in Marsville that would potentially have a dog. And an average number there of about 1.65 dogs. So somewhere around 6,900 dogs is an estimate, uh, of potential users of a dog park. And of course, there are families and, and, you know, owners. Um, and that's just to kind of set the stage for, you know, what the, uh, community demand might be. Uh, next one? Also to give you an idea of, uh, you know, what's available in the area for dog parks. Uh, as you can see here, I'm not going to read every one, but as you can see here, there are a number of dog parks in the area. Um, town, you know, larger and smaller towns that have them, ranging in size from, you know, as small as point five of an acre, half an acre up to two or three acres. Uh, City Raleigh has several dog parks and, uh, a wide range of sizes there. I didn't include them because of just the scope. Tried to do more of the smaller communities in the area. Uh, and the acreage that you see there, just to make, make sure to point out, that's the space that's actually inside the fenced area for the dogs. That doesn't include any of the peripheral areas, support areas, or anything else in the park. That is just the play area, if you will, or the off-leash area for the dogs. Okay? And so when we refer to a dog park, it's important to understand what, what is involved in a dog park? What type of amenities could you have inside the fence? And so the basic elements that you see, uh, for a dog park generally is a fence perimeter and, and often four or five feet, we would recommend five, a double gated entry area with concrete pads, since that's the highest traffic area to keep down mud, uh, and for the dogs and, and people be able to walk in and out, waste disposal stations, of course, and, uh, separate spaces for large and small dogs. As you can see from our models here, they come in all shapes and sizes. So, um, common upgrades that you see at many, many dog parks, depending on the site, you'll often see some type of ground cover used to reduce muddy areas. Very often that's wood mulch. It can be gravel or other things. Occasionally you'll see a dog park where they try to keep grass on it. But that's usually a larger sized park where the dogs can spread out more. Smaller parks, heavier traffic, you need something to keep down the mud. Uh, benches in natural shaded areas are important, you know, for elderly people or people that may spend a lot of time there. And some type of water source for the dogs. Uh, that's important from the dog standpoint of overheating in the summer, whether that's a water spigot and hose or some type of dog fountain, some type of water source. Okay? The next step beyond that, you get into, you know, desirable amenities that you might find at a dog park. Uh, if there's no trees where you have shade, actually building shade structures, you know, water's important for, for humans as well. So some water fountains, uh, park equipment. There is a wide range of equipment designed for dog parks available on the market. Uh, lighting in the dog park itself for use after dark, especially in winter like now when it gets dark so early. Um, and then wash stations or, you know, just concrete pads where your hoses are, where you can wash off feet before you get back in the car. Um, and then, you know, permanent restroom structures if it's not at a site that is part of a larger park where you have those amenities. Um, okay? So bearing all that in mind with the different options, um, staff would recommend, you know, looking for a site that would allow us to do at least a minimum of one acre of off-leash fenced area. That's inside the fence and in that space to be separated for small dogs and large dogs. Um, and entry gates in each area. Obviously waste disposal and mulch surfacing for the site and, uh, benches either in shade areas or, you know, if needed, one shade structure at least built in each site. And then of course, as we mentioned, water fountains for the humans and dogs. So obviously everybody always wants to know, well, what, what does something cost? Well, construction costs are going to vary greatly depending on your individual site, the features of that site, you know, your topography, you know, rock or tree cover and your soil conditions. Uh, and so all those things have to be taken into consideration. And any site that we have or that you find is going to require some type of site work. You know, there may be buffer requirements or other landscaping that's required by our UDO and, and other costs that we could run into. Okay? To give you an idea for, uh, you know, kind of the low end bare minimum, if we had a, a site, let's say an existing park or a site that had, uh, support amenities already in place, those being, you know, parking lots, driveways, restrooms, those things, things. Then all we needed was the actual dog park itself. Here's an idea of what that could cost. Um, you know, you need your fencing, your wood mulch, your dog waste stations. There's probably some grading to do in there and there may have to be so a little bit of engineering or surveying to get it laid out. Around a hundred thousand dollars is an estimate for those very basic elements of a dog park. Okay? If you have to step up, uh, if you're looking at a new site or you're having, you have a site where you're going to have to add parking and other things, those costs of course has, have to be added in. And a minimum that we look at there is about an acre for those support amenities and required buffers. So if you're looking at a, you know, two acre site, one acre inside the fence, all those things you can see there added to that comes up to about 585,000 for a cost estimate. Okay? And then if you wanted to take that extra step and really go, uh, out and get everything that you might want in, in that site, again, you know, on a two acre site, um, about 585 for the base elements. If you have to add shade structures with extra benches and, and walkways, uh, you know, you've got cost in that, your dog park equipment, lighting in the dog park area. Um, you know, if you decide that you want to do a registration fee and, and register the dogs and you want to control who gets in and out, there's card scanning and gate control systems that you'd have to have for that. And then obviously the biggest cost you see there is a restroom building, water service and sewer service that would have to be extended onto site, uh, and a contingency number there. All these contingencies are about a five percent, just, you know, to have some contingency about. That's about a million dollars by the time you add everything together. If you started with a raw site and had to put everything on. Okay? So once you have a facility in place, uh, there's obviously annual operating costs to consider. Uh, those are going to vary based on the size of your facility, you know, the type of ground cover you have and your user volume, of course. Uh, how often do you maintain it and, and other types of repairs it might need? If you do add things like water fountains or restrooms, there's, you know, obviously meter fees for that, electrical costs for your lighting systems, you know, and, and janitorial expense and other things. Those are annual operating costs. Jeannie, next slide. Uh, the basic routine maintenance cost that we find, that we estimate for a one acre dog park on an existing site would be about $25,000. That replaces your mulch, that does minor routine maintenance, that replaces your, you know, your dog waste bags. Um, if you add amenities like parking lots, restrooms, lighting systems and other things, that's going to add about another 25,000 for all your utility costs, um, your dog tags and other things. So around $50,000 for the full blown model, if you will. Okay? As Brandon mentioned earlier, obviously we do have some town owned properties that, uh, we could consider. We looked, uh, at several of those that he showed on the map earlier, uh, to try to see where we might have some suitable sites upon either developed park sites or undeveloped land that the town owns. Um, you know, there are some that we feel like could be suitable for, uh, dog park. Um, and then there are some sites that we're not recommending, either because of flood plains, you know, the location of the site or what it's currently being used for. Okay? First one to mention, uh, across the street from Town Hall, the extension of Franklin Nut Church Street and, uh, Town Hall Drive that is going to be going on as part of the road expansion project. That's the former CTA property. That's a 10 acre site that Brandon mentioned. Um, on that 10 acres, the majority of it is in the 100 year flood plain. There's about 1.9 acres, maybe two acres toward Marsville Carpenter Road that's in the 500 year flood plain, um, that could potentially be usable for a dog park, but it would require clearing and there may have to be some fill dirt to raise it up a little bit. You, you really need to get your dog parks out of the floodway or flood plain because the mulch and everything is just going to wash out if you don't. Uh, construction on that site could start after that road is, is built and we have road access to get over to that site. Um, but again, the location does affect the, uh, use and ability. You say 10 acres, it sounds like a lot, but there's really just a small window there. Next slide. The next site is one that I know you all have talked a lot about recently. That's the, uh, potential future fire station site at 1021 Harris Mill Road. That full site is about 6.3 acres. And depending on the fire station needs, the preliminary drawings that, that we've seen, um, there could be about two acres to the rear of that property that would be, uh, available for another use. There's no buffered streams or flood planes on the site. So, you know, that's one less hurdle to have to work with. Um, and if the site were developed at the same time with the fire station, there could definitely be development costs shared with that project and be, to be able to develop the entire site. Next. Um, now we'd like to go through several sites that staff does not recommend, uh, using and trying to find a way to put a dog park on. Cedar Fort District Park and Crabtree Creek Nature Park, the flood plains and floodways on those two sites, uh, would really just not make it feasible. Your mulch is going to wash, the mulch is going to catch in the fence. Those sites flood so much, it would just, it would literally destroy your fencing. Shallow Park and Marsville Community Park have very limited space options. Uh, if we were to use one of those sites, it would require changing either an existing recreation use or a future planned recreation use. Okay? Northwest Park is one that we've received some, uh, questions about. And after looking at the site and the layout of it, only about half an acre of that open field would be suitable for, suitable for an off-leash space. There's some elevation change there that leads down to a drainage area that goes on. There's some elevation change there that leads down to a drainage area that goes under the walking trail. And any type of heavy rain is going to cause a lot of wash problems. So you only have about a half an acre that's fairly level where we would expect, you know, mulch to stay in place. Limited parking on that site, there's no overflow parking anywhere nearby. You don't want a street parking, you know, on, on the road there. Um, and it is located kind of at the northwest edge of town, which, you know, would increase traffic through the Breckenridge Development. Church Street Park, uh, that site's fully utilized. The adjacent three point four acres is designated, uh, for park expansion, but, you know, expectation is we will use that for support areas, you know, for cricket activities. Because Church Street Park, like I said, anything, any space there has been programmed already within that park. Okay? Two nineteen Church Street, Brandon mentioned earlier, is part of the town center plan. Uh, that parcel is about three point five acres and there is about one point two acres of that site that is wooded that are behind the home. So from a size standpoint, there is space there that, you know, that could work. However, the site is in the future town center area. It's also located next to the First Baptist Church and, and other residential properties. And so at this time, uh, staff is not recommending that site due to the, you know, location and conflicts with the town center plan. So after evaluating all the, uh, existing sites, obviously the, the next option would be, uh, to move to acquiring land for a future park and look at programming a dog park in that area. As we mentioned earlier, the, uh, twenty eighteen Parking Rec Master Plan indicated the need for about a hundred and twenty-four point seven or a hundred and twenty-five acres um, of parkland by twenty twenty-seven to help maintain our service levels. Okay? Um, and so that, you know, once we find a space, whether that be an existing site or a new site, there are some other considerations that we would come back to council to discuss. Uh, you know, one of those being dog park user fees. Of the list that we showed earlier of, you know, other dog parks in the area, there's only a couple of those that actually charge registration fees, require tags and use entry systems, you know, gated systems, um, that being Kerry and Apex. Most of the others, uh, allow for the parks to be free for use of the public. Even with a free use of the, of the site, you can still require registration if you like. Uh, that helps you to be able to, you know, make sure how many people have, uh, signed up to use the site. Uh, it also gives you an opportunity for town liability waivers to be signed. You also can require vaccination records, for example, to make sure that the dogs that are using the site have, you know, their rabies vaccines and other required vaccines for everyone's safety. Okay? So when you talk about expanding and, and looking at new sites and, and new property, uh, one of the things that was recommended in our Parking Rec Master Plan was what's called a green printing exercise. And what that refers to, the term green printing, is evaluating the land within your jurisdiction that could be used for, you know, future park sites. And so we've been working on that for, um, a while now and, you know, we have a draft green printing report that is currently in staff review. Uh, we'll be making some revisions to that. Um, but, you know, that report will help us, we think, go a long way toward identifying future park sites. Okay, Jenny? Um, so as Brandon mentioned in his slide about evaluating property, we're doing the same thing with the green printing report. We're looking at our sites and, and evaluating them on the size, whether that's one parcel or it may be multiple parcels in, in an adjacent area where we can make a larger site. Uh, water impacts like stream buffers, flood plains, you know, any, anything that could impact recreational use of the site. Uh, obviously location and road accessibility is important. Um, and the, excuse me, the topography of the land. Um, the topography makes a big difference in what kind of recreational uses, but also your future development costs. Uh, any of your recreation facilities, if you have to level a site, put in, you know, retaining walls and other things, that is, you know, greatly impacts your costs. And so each of those criteria in our green painting report was given a maximum of five points. And so we'll be rating each site on a point scale and then we'll look at each one of those individual sites and adjust where they would, you know, where they would be in our ranking. Okay, Jenny? So other elements that we would consider, obviously proximity of existing parks, existing greenway locations, future greenway sites, um, you know, and, and just other, other reasons that we would look at where we would rank a site. Some of the sites that we evaluated are actively on the market for sale. Um, others are not and staff has not reached out or contacted any property owners at this point. Uh, we have seen a few sites, uh, come through development review with proposed site plans or, you know, asking questions about could this site be used for this type of development? Um, and so, you know, we have given some preliminary, uh, feedback to those developers. But like I said, at this point, we haven't reached out or talked to any property owners about purchasing any land. So with that, we'll open it up for questions.
Thank you, Jerry. I'd like to recognize Councilmember Robati and then I have a comment.
Uh, thank you, Mayor. I have two things and I swear I'm going to try to be quick. Um, Jerry, I think that, that it would be advisable to look at this project very much in phases. Because if we think about what do people want from a dog park, really? What people are asking for is just someplace where they can just let their dogs off the leash and let them run. And I think that, so I don't think that we should be as worried about, you know, can we put bathrooms there? I mean, obviously like water fountains, yes, a must. Um, you know, can we mulch? I, I'd like to think that there's something friendlier to dog paws and, you know, environmentally friendly that would be, that'd be there instead, but, you know, fine. But I don't think that, I don't think that we need a million dollar dog park upfront. And I, I, and I'm sure you agree with that. I mean, and I think that what we really should look for is a nice big area that's partially wooded where we can leave it wooded because the, I mean, the best thing about the dog park is that your dog gets to run in the woods, you know? And just, you know, and, and like the, like all the equipment and stuff. I, I mean, I've seen a million dog parks with equipment, I've never seen a dog on any of them. So, you know, just, I mean, I just think we, that we should maybe, um, also make part of the process to identify the, the must haves, which are safety for the dogs, safety for the owners. And then, you know, and then kind of, kind of, you know, go down from there. And, and I, I like for me, some of the things honestly we should cross off the list now and never come back to. Um, so, but I mean, this is such a great start and I am so excited to even be looking at this, at this PowerPoint. You have no idea. Um, yeah, and the other thing that I just wanted to put in the hopper was I, um, I think one of those must haves is a key card system. Um, and I think that, that at the start, we should just say right up front that in the beginning, it's going to be open to those seven thousand Morrisville dogs. And, um, it would be actually great if we could also put in, you know, let, like, offer key cards to people that run a small business in Morrisville, but maybe don't live here. I think that would be a nice perk. Um, but, and then we can build from there. If we have room for, you know, if we have room for more dogs, if there are times when the park is, you know, is empty and we can figure something out, then great. But I do think that this, we should identify this right up front as a Morrisville project and a Morrisville amenity. And then, you know, and, and see where we are when everything is settled. And that's all I had. Thank you very much. A great job, Jerry. Like really, really outstanding work here.
Thank you.
Mr. Allen, did you want to react to any of that or?
Oh, no, sir. I mean, I think she made some very good points and, and, you know, obviously I share and understand, you know, her discussion about, you know, what Ashley needs to go in a dog park was why we broke it down that way.
Okay, um, so I have some thoughts I'd like to share. Um, the price tag obviously is a little higher than I would like. And as I have noted before, I would like to acquire the land we need first for all our needs before actually improving the land that we already have. But I know we have to strike a balance. Uh, in the meantime, I do have a few thoughts. I'm in favor of exploring both the T T A and fire station properties for viability of a dog park. Uh, knowing that you noted that each of those wouldn't really occur until after the completion of those projects, the road and the fire station. So that's going pretty far into the future. Um, so that's going to take time. In the interim, I'd like staff to assess the viability of essentially a pop-up dog park in one or both of our fenced-in ball fields at Morrisville Community Park. They already have the fencing. I'm confident that our responsible dog owners would love the opportunity to have their pets off leash and will be responsible about cleaning up after their pets. There are some logistics, logistical challenges, obviously. I wouldn't advocate putting in mulch and if the wear and tear got to be too much, we could just stop having pop-up dog parks. But it will be an effective, safe, socially distanced outdoor opportunity. And it's also an opportunity to gather input from our dog owners about what they would like to see in our down, in our town dog park when we eventually get to it. They can also sign up for updates on the progress. Um, when we first talked about this last year, I went to God Bowl Park, the dog park, uh, in Kerry. I spoke to a lot of those dog owners, they have lots of thoughts about how, what's important in a dog park. Um, so I'd love to hear from our dog owners directly about what they're looking for. Um, in regards to additional locations, I think Duke Energy has many swaths of land around town which may be suitable for the placement of a low impact dog park. Um, with minimal investment, we might be able to just take some of those small areas and have lots of pocket dog parks essentially. There are also undeveloped parcels around town, some of which right along our greenways, which might be suitable for purchase or partnership to a dog's, to set a dog park. Um, what would be the best way for us to alert staff to those location ideas? Just send you guys an email because as you said, we don't want to identify certain things in public.
Yes, sir, that would be appropriate.
Yes, sir.
Okay, um, so those are my thoughts. I know that's throwing up a lot against the wall, um, and you don't have to react to it right away. But I think that would be, um, an interesting concept, a pop-up dog park.
Good.
Um, Councilmember Rao had his hand up. Mr. Rao?
Thank you, Mayor. Um, Jerry, uh, thank you for the dog park presentation, um, and all of this stuff. But man, I think it's really helpful to sort of see it, you know, what it would need, the resources it would take, different levels of investment. My question and comment had to do, and you don't have to give me an answer now, but just, um, an observation is, as we look at green printing and looking at future parks, I would be very interested in what we could be doing with cricket. I know things sort of slowed down, but I've noticed that they've, you know, sort of have one major field at, with your Church Street Park, but there's been some of the leagues have said that as they look to build more, uh, capacity, uh, not only for our local players, but also for tournaments. And Commissioner Hutchison has, you know, you know, even mentioned that if we had another field and we had stands and stuff like that when they bring in Team USA and these big tournaments, that we could actually perhaps even get some, you know, hotel occupancy kind of money and those kinds of things. So how would that work? I mean, when we look at it from just like another park site and would there be an opportunity to, to have another cricket field? Or would it be just looking at parcels of land that we own? Uh, or partnering with, you know, another organization that would want to team with the town? And make that kind of investment?
Honestly, sir, at, at this point, I think we would have to be looking at a new site. I mean, we've combed over, as we talked about, the sites, uh, looking for just dog park space of, of about an acre.
An acre?
A cricket field, you're going to have to look at at least three acres for a regulation field. I mean, that's just a large field. So I believe we would be looking at a new site there.
A new site? So we'd have to just look at our inventory and?
Yeah, not our, not our current, uh, owned properties. When I refer to a new site, I think it would have to be a site that we don't currently own.
Okay. Okay, but okay, got you. That's what I needed to hear. Thank you.
Anything else, Councilmember Rao?
No, that's it. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Uh, Councilmember Fender, followed by Mayor Pretend Johnson, please.
Hi, Jerry. Thank you for the presentation. I just had a question or clarification on the green printing. Is your staff doing that to identify parkland in town in general? Or to identify solely potential land for a dog park?
No, we, we are doing that exercise for in general, future parkland, not specific to any particular type of use.
Okay, great. Thank you. That's all I had.
Thank you.
Mayor Pretend Johnson, please. And then any other council members who wish to make a comment, please put in chat.
Thank you. Um, Jerry, I'm going to talk a little bit about green printing too. I wanted to know when you, when you're doing this study, are you looking at only undeveloped properties? Or are you looking at properties that, um, have some kind of use on them today? That whether it be residential or whatever, that, um, could potentially be used for, um, future parkland and amenities?
We're looking at both vacant properties and also those that, you know, may have a use, you know, but potentially, you know, is a much older use or a larger tract and only part of it may have a, you know, a home on it. So we are, we're looking at it at a wide variety of parcels.
Okay, great. That was the right answer because I think there are some properties out there that, um, that are ripe for redevelopment, um, that would potentially, um, be beneficial to us. So, and that kind of ties back into the comments we had before about land acquisition. Um, and, and the, the amount of land that's undeveloped in this town is limited, but that doesn't mean other properties, um, can't be evaluated and redeveloped, um, for our needs. So, okay, good. That, I'm looking forward to the green printing then, um, and the results of that. Um, as far as, um, the dog park, of all the amenities, um, that we have here in town or that we have currently have plans for, the one amenity we don't have, or maybe I should have said that differently. Um, the one amenity we don't have that I hear repeatedly from folks is the need for a dog park. So I really appreciate you bringing this forward and giving us, um, all kinds of options and at least a ballpark of figures and, um, yes, some of, some of these are pretty expensive. So I'm going to agree with Councilmember Robati about maybe a phased in or a scaled down or a, um, whatever to, to, to try to get a dog park up and running sooner than later. Um, so, uh, you know, more to come on that for sure. But, um, that, that's my first blush at that, my first take at that. Um, as far as, you really only brought us so far only two properties that are even viable for a dog park. Um, that being the former T T A property and then the Harris Mill site. And I, I'd like to, I'd like to expand that and, and know what other properties are out there that we could use. Um, clearly you, you've brought us only our town owned properties. Um, but I'd, I'd like to see what other properties that we could purchase that might be out there that would be a far better fit than these two. Um, or at least to compare to these two before any kind of decision is made. So that would be my take on that. Um, and the other thing, the other kind of quick note I made here, um, I'd also like to, as we are thinking about having a, um, a dog park sooner than later, take advantage of whatever parking already exists out there. Because that, that's one concern I have with the T T A property. There, you would, you would have to do so much, um, um, to make that a viable park of any kind. Um, and so therefore the dollars go up. So I'm trying to figure out what properties out there that we could use, that we could purchase, that we could rent, that whatever, and take advantage of existing, um, infrastructure to make it more, um, financially, you know, agreeable or financially, economical, economical. So anyhow, those are my only comments right now. Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, it appears that everyone who wants to make a comment has had a first bite at this apple. So we're going to circle back to anyone else who wants to speak again. I'll, uh, I recognize Councilmember Robati, please.
Um, I had one more quick thing that, um, Jerry, I, I wonder if you could work with also the, um, the planning staff because with large parcels in the McCrimmon Extension being, um, going up for sale, it occurs to me that if a developer buys a seventy-five acre site and fifty of it or sixty of it is, you know, developable for what they want and five acres is completely unusable for anything, there might be like two or three or, you know, five acres there where they would be willing to have us put a dog park and, you know, and if they're not using the land, maybe we could either acquire it cheaply or lease it from them or, you know, so just, um, just to pay attention to opportunities like that where we could, you know, we could acquire some land cheaply and someone else would already be putting in infrastructure and other amenities.
Yeah, we are definitely keeping our eyes open for any options.
I'd like to echo that. Any kind of creative, outside the box options might be nice to address the need, at least in the short term. I really like how Mayor Protem Johnson was talking about looking at other land, which actually might be faster to just acquire something rather than waiting till our projects are done. And the idea of using some of our already developed land, we've already taken some structures down when necessary. So if doing that and acquiring a nearby power source gives us what we need, I think that would be great. And there is one other thing. Oh, for the green printing, it reminds me a lot of the sidewalk prioritization, the way you numbered and like the rubric there. So I would just say that, as you mentioned, there's already some development interest in what might be some of the parcels that would be correct for us. So we really appreciate you bringing that forward to us as quickly as possible so that we can be agile and try to catch up with the market. Because as has been noted, the land is becoming more scarce every day. And I do like the idea of the McCrimmon Extension area. That is a lot of large parcels. So if we're able to subdivide or get any parts of that for any of our parks, that won't be inexpensive, but it might be the path forward. So seeing no other comments, I'd like to thank you, Mr. Allen, and your team for bringing this forward to us. Lots of good options. Thank you for doing all the homework on the, the costs associated with dog parks and for doing the due diligence to find out what other towns are doing, how they're doing it and what we'd like to duplicate. Any other questions for us or any probing things that you'd like to hear from us in order to help staff move forward?
No, sir. Thank you all very much for your feedback and for the opportunity to bring this to you.
Okay. Excellent. And once again, if News and Notes or wherever can let us know how that's progressing, that would be wonderful. So we have, does staff have anything for the good of the order before we consider a closed session motion? Okay. Hearing none, I'd just like to announce that our next regular council meeting is Tuesday, November 24th, starts at 6:00 PM. That plans to be a hybrid meeting, some in person. We welcome the public to go ahead and watch us virtually. At this time, we're going to move into a closed session. We're not going to have any more regular business and public session after this. So this is a closed session this evening to discuss a matter of attorney client privilege. At this time, I had asked for a motion to enter into closed session. I'd like to recognize Councilmember, actually, looks like I have Councilmember Robati.
I make a motion that we enter closed session pursuant to NCGS 143318.11A3 to discuss a matter of attorney client privilege.
Okay. I have a motion. I recognize Mayor Protem Johnson.
I will second.
Okay, I have a motion and second. Town Clerk Smith, if you could take the roll call vote to take us into closed session, please.
Councilmember Fender?
Aye.
Councilmember Scroggins Johnson?
Aye.
Councilmember Garamella?
Aye.
Councilmember Robati?
Aye.
Councilmember Rao?
Aye.
Mayor Protem Johnson?
Aye.
Mayor Colley?
Aye.
The motion to enter closed session passes unanimously.
Thank you very much, sir. It is 7:15 PM. We are moving into closed session. If at this time,